Let's start with the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is Monday, June 12th, 2017. Roll call?
Basil?
Here.
Meyer?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Missouri?
Here.
Caperos?
Here.
Waylon?
Here. Okay, we have the minutes in front of you. Any questions, corrections, or anything like that? If not, we need to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call?
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Missouri?
Yes.
Caperos?
Yes.
Waylon?
Yes. Recognition of audience?
Nobody's here?
There's nobody here. Okay, we're gonna go into our reports for the village commissions, beautification commission.
Well, flowers are up, they're watered. Nothing much more to say than that.
When's the next meeting?
They haven't told me. They canceled the last one, though. So it's gotta be, I believe it's the second Tuesday of the month, 7 o'clock.
Okay, Fourth of July commission.
The last meeting, there was not a forum to be able to conduct business, but everything is rolling to get the park started. There will be no more meetings until after the Fourth. They're cleaning up the park, they've got some set-up meetings, and there are regular feature Fourth of July Facebook page updates for vans and everything else, and we're just waiting to start.
Everything's gonna be in the grass area this year, right?
It's gonna be split depending on weather. We're thinking of the kiddie rides on the fire station parking lot, and then the more adult rides in the grass, but it's a little bit weather-dependent. If we get some huge deluge of rain, we will have to reconsider that.
You received word from the fire district that we cannot be in the park for long.
At all? Not the kiddie rides either?
Unless there's a storm.
Okay, then it will be entirely in the park. And that's all I have?
All right, thank you. Youth commission?
They will, future youth commission has or should be receiving their annual reimbursement for programs in the amount of $4,000. The next future youth commission meeting will be called Wednesday, June 21st, 2017, at 7:30 here at the village hall, and I will be attending. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ribbon of Hope commission, trustee Basil?
The ribbon of hope, dead bushes have been replaced at the ribbon, and benches, four benches have been painted for being assembled, and the bricks are gonna go out for engraving, and we're still looking at a fall to...
Do you have quite a few bricks up to this point?
Yeah, there's probably 50, I bet you 50 bricks that are gonna be engraved, and all eight benches have been bought. Four of them have been painted, and the lumber's bought for it, and they're just being assembled.
Okay, good. That's it. All right, Historic Preservation Commission, our next meeting is June 21st at 6:00 PM at the depot museum. We moved it to the evenings again to hope to get more members. We felt that the, you know, Tuesday at 10:00 AM might be a tough time for people to attend the meeting unless they're retired, or, you know, so on, so we're gonna have it then. Don Sala has the plaque program in full swing. He saw a sample of the plaque that was handed out. There have been six. A couple of the homeowners have already installed them, and it's going well. What we're gonna do is get some photos of the houses so we can post those with the original photo, you know, like when it was built back in 18, early 1900s, to the present, you know, to show people the difference. Driving the dixie is the historic society is going to greet the cars and give them stamps as they come through the depot on Saturday. So if you have anything, you know, going on, I wanted to see if the Fourth of July maybe wanted to sell car tickets or anything like that, you know, so I'll contact Ron and see if he wants to do that. But other than that, that's all I have on the historic preservation. Trustee Basil?
Okay, the treasurer report, John?
The treasurer report included in your packet. The, all of the village accounts, the total is $1,812,822, including the commission accounts is $1,998,973. The general account, $521,477, and you can see that last year this time, our total was higher, $76,000, excuse me. That's due to the taxes coming in slowly. In June already, we've received additional tax money. Also, the water sewer debt account, you can see from April through May, there was also a large change. That's due to a bond payment.
And paying tax compensation?
Yeah, that too. The commission, non-at depots, that total was $306,163.
Are there any unusual ones in there?
No, you know, there was just the $76,000 from the water sewer debt. That was about all I saw. There any questions?
If so, I'd like to make a motion to approving the treasurer's report for the prior months.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call?
Waylon?
Yes.
Caperos?
Yes.
Missouri?
Tess?
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
All right, the variance reports are, for the preceding month are enclosed for your review. And approval of the bills for the prior month, there was a couple added. Autumn blaze tree turf, it's not highlighted, but that was added after we received our packets. And gas quota for $723.30 was added, Hessel-Jefferson for $42.69, and Motorola Starcom for $816. So, I'd like to make a motion to approve the bills for $201,673.28.
Second.
A motion and there's a second. Roll call?
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Missouri?
Tess?
Caperos?
Yes.
Waylon?
Yes.
Okay, the next thing is consider an ordinance establishing the prevailing rate of wages for fiscal year 2017-2018. This is a standard ordinance, and this action is an annual formality required by law. It is recommended that this ordinance be approved.
Ordinance number 1264.
1264. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 1264, consider an ordinance to establish the prevailing rate of wage for fiscal year 2017-2018.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call?
Waylon?
Yes.
Caperos?
Yes.
Missouri?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is consider a motion granting an easement to Commonwealth Edison in the state right-of-way for power of distribution and maintenance activity. Apparently, there have been letters sent out to all the homeowners or all the property owners along Dixie Highway and Indiana Avenue, and I don't know if you had a chance to read it, but the attorney gave an opinion as far as what should be done, and it basically sounds like they're just cleaning up what should have been done before. I know all the property owners own to the center of the road, and that was explained in the attorney's letter as well. Did you want to add anything?
No, the state has a right-of-way for egress, and anything occurs on top of the ground. The problem is when they reported it, they didn't record comments, easements appropriately, so they're just trying to clean this up before they invest more money in upgrading the electric.
Okay. Any questions? I'd like to make a motion granting an easement to Commonwealth Edison in the state right-of-way, right-of-way for power and distribution and maintenance activity, and giving the president the approval, the sign.
Actually, the sign will always do it.
So, a second, okay. Roll call?
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Missouri?
Yes.
Caperos?
Yes.
Waylon?
Yes. Trustee Caperos?
Consider a resolution authorizing appropriation of more fuel tax funds for fiscal year 1718. This resolution reflects the budget we adopted and is required before the village spends any of this funding. Ordinance is enclosed, so I will go ahead. You got a resolution number?
2017-06.
2017-06. I'll go ahead and make a motion approving resolution number 2017-06, authorizing appropriation of motor fuel tax funds for fiscal year 1718.
Second.
Motion and second. Roll call?
Waylon?
Yes.
Caperos?
Yes.
Missouri?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Okay, any old business?
I have a old slash new business.
Okay.
We discussed the deck and railing or boardwalk down an old street on the last meeting. The motion approved $42.9 for T&amp;K, but we did have a lot of conversation about also getting quotes on doing aluminum instead of all that wood along the railing. So we got the bids for the railings, we've got a kind of an average level one and then a little bit fancier one with the average level aluminum railing, which will look just like wrought iron. The wrought iron was not affordable. But this will look a lot like wrought iron, completely maintenance-free, it doesn't rust like wrought iron does, it's a paint coat, it chips, should be pretty durable. But T&amp;K came back and they removed the amount for the wood railings. They had to add some for bracing to be able to attach the aluminum or iron to it, and then installation because the materials would be dropped off at site. So between the cost of the railing and the cost of the installation and reshuffling the whole bid, it comes in higher than $42.9, but it's still below our budget. It comes in at 49, is that a nine or an eight?
49.
31109. Again, it's below our, the initial budget was $50,000, but it's above what, you know, we discussed at the last meeting.
Kenny Irwin's been a saint through this whole thing. He figured this out because we had to put additional framing under there to hold these heavier posts.
Instead of just sticking them on the deck, right.
Right. And he's, and he's gonna be installed for us, so he's still, you know, we're just paying for the aluminum material from a different company.
Yep.
We think this is the way to go. It's gonna look nicer, it's probably gonna last a lot longer, and if a section of that aluminum does get damaged or bent, it's a matter of just removing it and buying a new section and installing.
And even down to depending on how it's built, and I don't think, it would probably have to be a section of the ones we chose. Some of the things, you can actually remove individual rails from it if something gets damaged and replace individual...
Sections.
Yeah, little, not even sections, the individual little spindles. But anyway, yeah, it seems like it'd be durable.
We're gonna alternate four-inch and two-inch posts, so we'll have a four-inch and a two, four and two, so it'll break up that darkness look. I spent a lot of time on this in the last two weeks. I think this is the way to go.
Yeah, so just kind of getting a consensus. We can't vote or anything, and I'm not even sure if we have to or not, but I figured I'd bring it up so we know where we stand.
It's kind of like a field change order, but I know it was discussed at the last meeting, there was a lot of discussion about...
That we were gonna get a quote on railing.
Pollards maintaining all this wood, and then the discussion was, is it gonna look like a deck?
Yep.
We really wanted to look like a walk here.
And the biggest amount of maintenance on doing wood would be all those vertical rails along the entire block, so this eliminates that, and it would just be the, you know, the wood that you walk on that would have to be maintained periodically. So just kind of a consensus thing. I, you know, I'm all in favor of doing it this way instead of the deck look, but, and it still comes in under our initial budget.
So I guess, is there any opposition to this alternance? So we get the project?
I think it will cut pay down on the maintenance.
For the last one, too.
I have no objection.
Okay.
Okay, so we have, there was old new business. Do we have any?
Yeah, the chief has one other item.
An old business?
Under new business.
Under new business, okay.
We approved in the budget a new squad car for the cost of $24.9 under the South Suburban Cooperative price. The prices for 2017-18 did increase. It's up by about $2,000 than our budgeted item. However, we have with the conversion, $30,800 budgeted. I'd like to order a new squad. Terry's Ford has one in stock, and they're willing to match the South Suburban price, and that's at $27,444. And then the conversion, I'll have $33,56 left to convert.
And you're not putting a cage in there anyway, so that's...
I'm not gonna put a cage if I have to. I will use some of my professional development to cover that. It's a mistake I made. It just, the prices remain consistent for years. This price, this year, it went up. I wasn't expecting that.
This is the Ford SUV all-wheel drive?
This is, yeah, this is the Ford equal to like the Explorer. It's an all-wheel drive, just like the last one we have, it'll be outfitted the same way.
So what is the difference? I mean, as far as the breakdown?
Well, right now, the difference is we budgeted just for the vehicle, $24.9, but it's coming in at $27,4. We budgeted $5,900 for the conversion, so if I use part of that conversion to cover the cost of this, it'll bring the conversion cost down to $33,56, and then I'll pull from like professional development.
I wanna say this happened last year or two years ago, too.
Each year it does, because we're not on the same timeline as them when they, when they come out with this. Just like the state bid, they always come out after our budget comes up.
So what do you need?
Just if anybody has any questions.
You can't go in, this is just for information, but if anyone has any strong objections, the chief could be available.
Just let me know, because I'm gonna call her tomorrow, and I'd like to order it.
You want to get this car on duty for the fourth, right? Take your goal, did you get it online?
That is my goal. I don't know if it's achievable, but if we start right away. The other thing is, we've done several things in the past. One, the treasurer has issued a check, and we've picked the car up. The other is we've waited. If we could cut the check and get the car and start working on it as soon as possible, it's up to you. I mean, I just wanna get it ready and try to get it going for the fourth.
I mean, the way I look at it is that, when you purchase a new squad, it's more than just the cost of the vehicle, it's equipping it and everything else.
Absolutely.
So I think if you take the cost of the squad and what we have budgeted for the actual vehicle itself and equipping it, you stay within the budget items. I mean, I don't see a problem with it at all. It is what it is.
Yeah.
Yep.
Everybody else?
And your replacing of Crown Vic?
Yeah, the Crown Vic is gonna go, we're gonna keep that. That's gonna be like a part-timer's car, so we'll have two part-timers cars. This one will go to Aaron Decordi. He'll be assigned this car. I mean, we tried to assign the full-timers a car, but part-timers still use them from time to time.
The part-timers use Poo cars, basically.
And then we'll have two Poo cars, then. We'll have the Crown Vic, and we've got the Ford Taurus for the Poo car.
Eight cents.
Yeah?
And then you're still able to convert it in that lower amount left over the $33?
There's still some extra equipment I have to purchase, but I'm gonna pull some of the equipment from other cars that we're not using, like the docking station for the computer. I'm getting the radio from his car. But there's still some. The bottom line, like Mr. Capero said, I got the squad car and the conversion is $30,800. I'm gonna stay within that. If I go over it, I will use my professional development to cover that. I think it's only fair, my mistake, I'll use my money.
I was just curious if that was like a set conversion fee, so.
Well, it depends on what you have, because some years, we pay for a console, some years we reuse a console, sometimes we, we'll have the siren controller for one. That is, that's like $640 just for that siren controller, so if we have one that we're reusing, we save money. If we have to buy it, then it's an, it's an extra cost.
The happiest person that I know, the radio, where his buddy, I can't tell him my radio. I got a cell phone.
The good news is, the equipment we buy is all off a state bid, so at least we know we're getting. So when we get the siren box, that's a state bid, and we get the light bar, that's state bid. Would we be able to give the treasurer a cut a check for that within like maybe two, three weeks if possible? If that's what Terry's wants to do, because that's the full price, that's with the M plates, the MP plates, and that's with the title transfer, that's everything, it's all.
In my mind, it's budgeted. It's not like, it's anything that, it's done. It's appropriated, it's budgeted, so. Well, we typically, John, if anything's over $5,000, we bring it to your attention before you just go out and buy it.
Right.
You know? Well, I mean, that's a single item, it's not like, it's anything, it's not like this is surprising anybody. It's a squad car, it's in the budget, so I don't see an issue with it.
Yeah, plus if you wait two or three, or two, three weeks, you're, we're on Fourth of July.
Well, then you have to order it, and then we'd be getting it in like August and September.
And you could lose the price of that car, because they got one right now sitting there. So I said, go.
Let's do it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other new business?
Yeah, I got one. I'm sure, I have definitely seen it, and I'm sure others have. We got a couple of golf carts driving in town. I personally don't have a single problem with it. Every other village, I mean, Mantino's got it, Moment's, Piattone, everyone's got it. I think we just, to get it right, I'd say, in my opinion, we should be looking at having the attorney draft an ordinance. Something, I did research on it with Mantino and Moment's and others that have it. It's really a pretty simple thing. They just register it. You issue it as a permit under a, an unlicensed vehicle or unlicensed motorized, and it's an unlicensed motorized device. It's just for anything that you can't get a plate for through the Secretary of State, so it would get registered with the village and stuff like that. There's, there's other ordinances out there that, I mean, everyone can look at. It's all in Sterling codifiers. Pretty basic, but I think it's probably best that we just, I mean, we've seen them, they're coming around, they're becoming ever more popular. Mantino's to the point where they have a golf cart parade before a event that they have every year, I mean, so. I've seen a lot of them, but I... Maybe it's probably time to get a little progressive and just get it figured out. I remember seeing an email from you about our policy toward these golf carts. What was?
Well, there's the, there's the golf carts, and then there's the low-speed vehicles, because there is a state statute that governs low-speed vehicles and what constitutes a low-speed vehicle. A golf cart by itself is not a low-speed vehicle. If a golf cart has the headlights, the taillights, the turn signals, and all this other equipment, the seat belts, and you gotta have a licensed driver, that's a low-speed vehicle. What other towns have been doing have been enacting an ordinance saying, okay, you can drive a golf cart, which means it's not a low-speed vehicle, it's just a golf cart, and you can use them on the roadways, and I think that's what Mr. Caperos is talking about.
Yeah, yeah, but Illinois, I think it's three miles per hour. Does Piattone have? Does Piattone have an ordinance like that? I've seen it on the Piattone, yeah. Let's just take Piattone's ordinance and... You can take Mantino's. Mantino's actually the one with the biggest.
I think Piattone got theirs from Mantino.
Mantino, yeah. And then Mantino was like, I think, the first out there. And the nice thing about Mantino's that I did notice, and I think it's appropriate, is that every year, the, you know, the owner has to register the vehicle. It's issued a permit, basically like a sticker for one year, and I actually know somebody at Mantino, it's just a paper certificate that they have to keep in it, in that golf cart at all times. But every year, in order to obtain that, the police department actually does a safety inspection on it, that the brake lights work, the headlights work, the turn signals work, that it is equipped with safety restraints and everything else, so I think, you know, if there's anyone that's gonna tell us if it's appropriate or not to be driven. Do you know how many are in Piattone, Jeff, that they have licensed? Do you have any idea?
I don't know. I know there's quite a few in Beecher, and we've...
Yeah, I would reach out to Mantino. They're the biggest. I mean, on a average Saturday for Mantino use soccer, you'll see 15 to 20 of them. People, you know, from Mantino, they just drive it right to the park rather than their vehicles.
Now, if they're low-speed vehicles, Secretary of State is actually registering them. They have a license plate for low-speed vehicles.
Yeah, but I think that's under three miles, three miles an hour and under.
That's more than that. I mean, they have to, they can only travel on roads that are under 30, I think it's 30 or 35 mile an hour speed limits.
So these are specific kind of golf carts, not the ones that are on the golf course because they don't have turn signals.
No, 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 these aren't.
They don't have headlights.
Yeah, these are custom.
These are custom-made golf carts.
Yep, they're equipped with headlights and turn signals and brake lights. It's all part of the going green thing, because you can charge them with a bag.
Yeah, I know, Florida.
Do you just want me to email everybody the low-speed vehicle statute? It's a state statute, and see if that'll work?
Yeah, and the Mantino ordinance, and the Mantino ordinance would be there on that. I'm looking at it right here.
It's a little bit of history, so does that mean that we would actually like regulate them, officers would actually cite them if they were doing something?
Yep, it's all, it's all in here. If you go to Sterling codifiers, and actually, I'll see if there's a way I can figure it out, but it's, the Mantino ordinance is 7-3-2-5 unlicensed motorized vehicles. It's right there. It's very basic. They can actually be impounded, they can be ticketed on them, they can receive TIs on them, everything, they can be seized. It's all there, so. And at least allow snowmobiles years ago.
Oh, yeah.
I was going to ask also, like Gators and little Lopets?
Those are the different category. Those are the licensed by the state type vehicles. Actually, you can't license, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, you can't license a scooter if it's under 40, if it's 49 CCs or less, correct?
That's a scooter, you can, if they're 49 CCs, it's a state license, but it falls under, you need a regular driver's license to drive it. And anything more than that, they need a Class L motorcycle license, and then a Class M if it's a higher CC. The Gators, the ATVs, you can't license those. They're, they're off-road vehicles.
So they would fall under disordinance then?
They wouldn't fall under disordinance, because they're not low-speed vehicles. They can, they can travel greater than 30 miles an hour. So it gets into definitions there. So if I have an ATV, a quad, I mean, they can do 40, 50 miles an hour, that's not a low-speed vehicle.
What do you wanna do with that? I've seen some of these, John, they're, they have bigger engines in them, and they move. I see one every Sunday evening go by my house, and it's got three rows of seats. Look, read it, the Mantino's thing here, it says, it is for any motorized device or vehicle not bearing the proper registration plates from the Illinois Secretary of State or incapable of being registered by the Secretary of State of the provisions of the Illinois Vehicle Code. And such, and shall include, but is not limited to, motor scooters, golf carts, or motor scooters, go-karts, golf carts, go-cads, new bikes that are motorbikes. The section shall not apply to automobiles, motorized wheelchairs, or an electric personal assistance mobility device as defined by the Illinois Vehicle Code. So what about this Polaris that goes down the street that... It's not, it's not in here.
Right, that's, that's a quad.
So that would be illegal, that kind of?
Yeah.
This, we should, it shouldn't be that difficult. I mean, there's many municipalities all around here that have this. I mean, we're not reinventing the wheel here. It's a pretty basic thing. We're looking to address golf carts. I've seen them in town. It's just simple. Let's just figure it out. I mean, unless the board is adamantly against having go-karts in town, you know, figure out an ordinance, so that way it's legal and legit and proper. The reason I say Gators, because the village has one to drive up and down the streets all the time. Absolutely, we do.
Yep.
So what?
Okay, we're checking into it. We're gonna collect the information and head it to the next board meeting?
Yeah, I mean, they could probably get us something too bad. We should probably let Todd go with this completely technical.
Any other new business?
One more thing. I wanted to know who plans to walk, ride, whatever in the parade. I need to determine if I'm gonna get candy. Last year, we had some issues with the candy. the candy and Greg said we weren't going to do candy anymore unless you guys want to walk.
We didn't throw the candy last year.
Yeah, we were candy thrown out from the vehicle and we had issues.
I wasn't in the vehicle.
When was that?
Yes, I was.
Yes.
I was the owner. You could not throw candy out of here.
I think candy thrown at my head, so I, I know that there were candies.
So for me...
I don't believe that, that trustee is on the board anymore. But I, I, we do need to know, you know, who wants it to walk.
I, I'm usual. I plan on it unless my kids win the championship and I'll be with them. So we've only lost one game this year, so.
If we're riding, I'm riding. But you can't throw.
What are they planning on riding?
I will walk. Just, I'll just get my ride back.
What are they playing on?
I don't know. Probably the hover again. I was, I don't know.
That's what Greg was talking about.
Yeah.
They're just letting it open at the end of the next week.
Okay.
Plan on it unless I'm in the corn.
That's shut in. They're just not going to do it for a ride.
All right, any other new business? Okay, we need a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second. Motion and seconded. Rocco?
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Mizurik?
Yes.
Caperos?
Yes.
Wayland?
Yes.